See more insights on the same we have with this Dr. Rani Bhagat, a very warm welcome ma'am. Dr. Rani Bhagat is an assistant professor in department of botany at Baburaoji Goldup College Pune. She has completed her M Phil from Alagappa University Tamil Nadu and PhD from Agarka Research Institute Pune. She has also authored two different, two reference books that is flora of Baramati and floristic diversity of Mursi. She is also a recognized guide for botany and environmental science in Pune University with currently three students under her guidance. Ma'am is also a fellow of Indian Association for Angiosperm Taxonomy and has authored and presented more than thirty research papers nationally and internationally. She is an awardee for multiple recognitions, the most prestigious being in I A A T in international conference for oral presentation. Dr. Bhagat is an extensive floristics explorer and is involved in related activities nationally and internationally since the last twenty years. She has also discovered new species and made additions to flora of Maharashtra. She is a recipient of multiple fellowships for research work on wide variety of topics. Along with all the recognitions and excellent contributions to science, Dr. Bhagat has also published an article in Braille. Ma'am, we are really honored to have you here and without further ado, we are eager to learn while you share your knowledge and insights with us. Over to you ma'am.
Thank you so much for a nice introduction and also thanks to Shilpa ma'am for invitation to me. We will start with the topic as just now ma'am told that I am going to talk on the topic biodiversity of grasses. Now which is belonging to the family poesi and its significance. Uh before I have to start with this lecture, uh in the initial slide itself, I want to tell you that. Grasses, these are the green gold on the earth surface. Though we value the gold, but it is a very, very important goal on the earth. So it's a green gold and the grasses are a great group of plants on these planets. So let's go with this. Next slide please. So in my today's topic, I am going to sensitize the characteristics of the grasses. Its identification in ecology, utilization of grasses. And the management of grasslands, why it is essential. Next please. So, um as far as the family poes here, this family gramine is concerned. It is the fourth largest flowering plant family in the world. And there are about eight hundred genera and eleven thousand eight hundred species in the world. So about half, that is four hundred genera, these are the monotopic, that is a single genus and single species. Or they may be diatopic, that is single genus with two species. So there are about one hundred and twenty seven species of grasses which are endemic to the state. So they are very restricted in distribution. Near about four hundred and thirteen species, they are belonging to the one hundred twenty-three genera. And forty-one varieties are reported for the state so far. And nearly or the twenty percent of the land surface of the Asia and more than ten percent of the India are under the grasslands. Including both the lowland and the mountain grasslands. So globally about seventeen grassland ecoregions, these are detected as critically endangered. By Conservation Science Program of World Wildlife Fund. Next please. Which lie in Indo-Malayan regions. So we will see about what are the grasses, then what are the grasslands, which are the different types of grasslands in the world. What are the different types of grasslands in India, which are the various compositions of grasslands which are found in the Pune districts. And then we will see the morphology of grasses. Then we will learn about the economic importance or the significance of the grasses. And then we will see about what, what are, what is the need of a grassland management. And what kind of things are happening in the nature and in our surrounding areas. So grass is nothing but especially a member of a family poesi. Generally what we say that whatever the species which grow in the agricultural land and which we uproot, all these are not belonging to the grass category. So the terminology which is used as a turn, so turn is nothing but a weed. But grass is different than that. This is one of the member from that weed, but these are different with a distinct nodes and internodes. Uh many times the members of other families like Cypresi which is generally known as sages. Or a members from the family Jankesi are known as a rushes. So people say that all these are grasses, but it is not like that. So grasses are different than the sages and rushes and we will understand what are the basic difference between these sages and the poesi too. So basically the grasslands, these are commonly predominated by the herbs. And the other grass or grass-like plants which are including undergrowth trees. So this is as far as the Indian climatic condition is concerned, we see the grasslands in between the tree habitats. Or we, we may see the grasslands in the forest land too. But as far as the other countries or the world grassland is concerned, we, we can't see the trees in that. So these may be a true grassland, but as far as the Indian, uh India is concerned, we don't have a true grasslands. So we, uh the grasslands are interfaced with the tree habitats. So grassland is an area where the annual rainfall is insufficient to support the shrubs or the trees. And that's why we see the luxuriant growth of a, uh this grasses during the rainy season. And in India, trees and grasslands are mixed. But it is still high enough to that desert, uh which are not from there. Next please. So up to seventy percent of the world's agriculture land, uh which is given to the grasses. And more than fifty percent of the world's calories, these are come from the grasses and it highlights the significance. One more click. So the key characteristics of the grassland ecosystems are the limited annual rainfall. Or the dry climate throughout the year, or there is a lack of nutrients in the soil and that's why it does not support the tree flora. Or these grasslands are prone to drought and uncertain precipitation it is there. And so there is not much biomass to support the other kinds of a flora. And there is sometimes frequent fire due to the semiarid climates and the flash lightening. And this is one of the characteristics of the grassland and the poor vegetation growth which is dominated by the grasses. So this is the general morphology of a spikelet. Next please. So as far as the morphological thing is concerned, to understand a one member of a grass. Is that as far as leaves is concerned, there is a parallel venation, there is a sheathing lip basis. Where the, uh the basal part of the leaves, it's encircled the stem. So that is known as a sheathing lip base. Then leaves are ligulate, that will understand in the next slide, cylindrical curve and fibrous root system. And there is a distinct nodes and internodes. Next please. So um just now I told you that many times the people get confused with the members of Cypresi with the poesi. And here we understand the best difference between the Cypresian poesi. I will highlight very few things. As far as the Cypresis concern, these are herbs only, but poesi if one can consider a poesi. Members may be herbs or trees. So bamboo is the species which is a tree, so it belongs to the poesi. Uh as far as the stem character is concerned, in case of Cypresi, stem it is triangular, rarely cylindrical. But in case of poesi, it is always cylindrical and it's hollow. Uh one more important thing is that the fruit type, it is of a nut or akin in the Cypresi. And in case of poesi, it is a cariopsis. And about the leaf character, the leaves are three ranked in Cypresi, while in case of poesi, it is two ranked. Next please. So here you can understand the difference between the poesi and the Cypresi. Where in case of a poesi, there is a distinct nodes and internodes, leaves are with a sheathing lip base. But you can see here in case of um this Cypresi member. Uh the leaves, these are sustaining the flowers, flowers at the top and these are three ranked. But here in case of poesi, these are alternate one. Next please. Uh in case of leaves, the, there is a sheathing lip base. Here you can observe the sheathing lip base with a distinct hairs. And there is a ligule, lip ligule, you will see the picture in the next slide. There is a hairy rim at the nodal region of the stem. As well as you may see the hairy rim at the ligule portion of the lip. Uh these are membranas and there is a auricle structure, you will see the encircled or half circle structure. Lip lamina, it is a originate from the basal pituitary portion and it gets expanded and showing a parallel venation. A single midribbit is there and all the veins are parallely arranged. And the lip lamina generally it is narrow. Lip tip, it is acute, it is very sharp, some very rarely it is blunt headed. The lip bases, these are corded and the, it is a pituital one and the sometimes tunicate one. Lip shape, these are lancet, linear or ovolom. Next please. So here in this picture you can see that this is the lip lamina and at the base of lip lamina, there is a ring. And that ring is known as a lip ligule. So here I want to tell you that the lip ligule plays very significant role in the identification of grasses. And even at the lamina side, at the margin of lip lamina, you are observing the hairy outgrowth. So very special grasses, they show such a hairy growth on the margins of lip lamina. And the this ligule, it may be hairy or it may be without hairy structure or it may be papery. Next please. In this slide you can see that the lip ligule it is papery. So it is, uh it is showing a variety or variation with respect to the lip ligule and helps in identification. Next please. Now about the inflorescence, that is a flower structure. So there are so many flower, they are grouped together and they are arranged in a very typical fashion. So they may be either a panoply type as in case of a swargam, javar. Or it may be of a racium type as in case of a, uh this wheat. Actually it is a spike, but it is of, from the racimos category. It may be sometimes branched racium in case of a dicanthium. Or it may be digitate one, there is one of the member from poesi that is digitaria. Where you can see the so many raciums, but these are informal digitate structure. And the, it is having a special structure sometimes seen that is sheet or bracts. Sometimes the inflorescence may be solitary, that is single one. Uh sometimes the, uh so many florid, they are combined together, structure is known as a spikelets. And this spikelet, they are formed the bunches on the inflorescence axis. So we will see the structure of a spikelet. Next please. So this is the basic grass spikelet morphology, how the flowers are arranged and how the stamens are there in the florid. And in the spikelet, what kinds of florids are there. Next please. So here you will see that these inflorescence, they are composed of a spikelets, which is the unit of a inflorescence. And in the inflorescence or that flower structure, small, small minute florids are there. These are actually flowers, but in case of family poes or Cypresi, it is termed as a florid. So these florids, they are grouped together. It is referred as a mini florid or mini flood spikelet. Or sometime there may be a flowers which are one to two flood, so there is a presence of only two florids. So basically in the single florid, next slide please. In this single, uh, next please. In the single florid, what structures are present, these are not like a normal flower, means calyx corolla and roshium gynosium. Such a type of structure it not there, instead of that, some highly modified structure, highly advanced structure. Because poesi is the most advanced family in the flowering plants and still evolution is going on in this family. And so a very special kind of structure which may, which you, you may see. And that is with the lower gloom, uh which is a paper structure. Inside to that, there is one more paper structure known as a upper gloom. Inside to that, you will see there is presence of again small, small minute paper structures known as a lemmah and pelia. And then the flesh structure at the base of ori, which actually plays significant role in the dispersal of seed is lodequils. And then ori, which matures and it produces the grain or fruit of the family poesi. Uh which is called as a cariopsis type of fruit. And then uh in the single florid, there is presence of three stamens, which is a male reproductive structure of the flower. Through which the reproduction takes place and the seeds or the fruits are developed and the stigma it is feedery. Next please. Uh about the habits of family poesi members or the grasses. These may be either arboreal or these may be terrestrial or these may found on the walls or they may be aquatic one. Or the grasses which are found on the seashore line, these are different. So here in this picture you are observing the variety of habits, like a arboreal grasses. The grasses which are grows on the tree trunks or on the surface of the walls. And these are actually a poeculohydros grasses, because during the rainy season they can take the water. And they becomes green in color. And another kind of grass that is hygrorhiza, which grows in the water. And the on the walls, trypon filipormis or trypon lisboi, these are the grasses which helps in binding the soil. And the, there are different kinds of grasses which grows on the seashore line. And actually male and female inflorescence in these grasses are different and they rolls on the soil. Along the seashore line and this special grass, which is having a very spiny structure, bunchy structure. And this is nothing but the spinipix litterias. Next please. Uh some of the grasses, they are very specific to the marshy areas and they support that soil binding characters along the river side. And besides that, so many insects, birds and reptiles, they come and they feed on that. So this is the, one of the very special kind of a marshy place grass, that is the stachyram spontaneum. Uh which is actually wild sugar cane plant. Another like is isacne, then wild swargam species, then passpallan species. And in the last picture you are observing the different kinds of a grasses along the river side. Next please. Uh so we, here in, in upcoming slides, we will see the morphology of grasses. Here you are observing the prostate or horizontally growing grass, then erect grasses. These are, they are forming a bunches and they, they bind the soil. And they prevent the soil erosion. So this is a chrysopogon grass. Next please. This is a tragus grass. Next please. So these grasses are growing on a variety of soils, some may grow on the salty soil, some may grow on the aluvial soil. Some, some may grow on the rock crevices. So accordingly they have a small habits or the larger habit like that. So this is a europetium grass which grows in the rock crevices. Next please. So you see here you can observe that the, what kind of root system it has. It is having a very profuse advantageous root system, fibrous root system it is there. And because of that, it holds the soil. Uh beside that, the seepage and precipitation process, it is very good through these grasses. And for a longer period of time, it can maintain the. In the soil. Next please. Here you can observe the another kind of a grasses, generally the cultivated cereal crops. Uh here I want to tell you one important thing is that all over the world, uh the most important grasses. These are the belonging to the cereals, these are the staple foods of the human beings or mankind. Like swargam or javar or the sugar cane or wheat, bajra, rice. All they belonging to the grasses and they having a very typical kind of root system. So that is from the lower node which gives the extra support to the plant body. Such a kinds of roots are called as a steel roots, observed in case of maize and javar. Next please. Uh here you can see that at the nodal region, you are observing the small hairy structures or sometimes bird. Or sometimes sheathing lip bases come out of this, this nodal portion. So this is the variety of grass morphology which plays significant role in the identification. Next please. Uh just now I told you that the grasses, they may be either herbs or they may be trees. So here, here you are observing a tall grasses, that is bamboos. Next. Now coming to the world grasslands. Uh there are actually a two main kinds of grasslands at world level. Uh like a tropical grasslands and the temperate grassland. So those which are grows in the very cold climatic conditions. So ushna and thunda, tropical and temperate grasslands are there. Uh temperate grasslands actually include the Eurasian steppe and the North American prairies, they include, they are from the. Um temperate grasslands and then Argentina, Pampas, these are the names of a grasslands in a different countries. And the tropical grasslands which include the hot savannas and the Sub-Saharan Africa and the Northern Australia. Means the grassland, they have many names, like prairies in the North America, Asian steppes in then savannas and wells in Africa. Australian rangelands, pampas, lynas and the sea roads. These are the variety of names for the grassland all the world. In some, uh South America, it is called as a pampas. And in the central Eurasian grasslands, they are referred as a steppes. While African grasslands, they are calling it as a savannas. Uh the largest temperate grasslands of the world is the Eurasian steppe. Which is extending from actually Hungary to the China. And the well ki- a kind of a grasslands, they are found in Africa. Which is actually occurring in the most southern portion of the continent. And so here the temperate grasslands, generally prairies and the steppes, they are the actually true grasslands. Now why these are called as a true grassland because um there is a vast usually throughout the complete level of a. Grasses, means there is a treeless tract, trees are not found in the grasslands. So in the prairies and in the steppes, you cannot see the trees. So there is a vast level of a grasses only. And these are true grassland, but here in India, we have a, we don't have a true grasslands. And such a kinds of grasslands is also found in the South Western Europe and Asia also. And in India, the grasslands have both characteristics, that is, there is a span across the North India and Central India. And some regions of Gujarat and some regions of the Sahayadres or the Ghats. So here in this picture, you are observing the distribution of a grasslands, like prairies, pampas, steppe, well and the savanna. Next please. Now, uh here we are more concentrating on the grasslands in India. So as I have told you that the grasslands in India are usually found around the river plains or the Indo-Gangatic plains. And the Brahmaputra plains in the north and the Narmada plain in the Gujarat. And the grassland ecosystem in India, it is from the Himalayan paschas, paschas manjukuran. Now, we have a terai grasslands of the foothills, we have a semi-arid grasslands of western and central India. Uh then scrublands of the Deccan plateau. And the schola kind of forest in the western Ghats and these kinds of grasslands are also found in nilgiris and annamalai ranges. So depending upon the quantity of rain, that is precipitation through the rain. Uh there may be either a tall grassland, there may be medium sized grasslands or there may be a short grasses. So in India, we have a, actually a four to five kinds of grasslands. First one is a coastal grassland, which includes the sea beaches, that is mainland and the inland type of grassland. Um then the salt marshes, then the mangrove grasslands are there. We have a riverine aluvial grasslands, we have a mountain grasslands at the Himalayan ranges. Uh which includes the Himalayan subtropical grasslands, then Himalayan temperate grasslands, alpine meadows, trans-Himalayan steppe. Uh grasslands of northeast hills, grasslands of central highlands, western Ghats, that is Sahayadres. And then we have a, uh plateaus of a northern western Ghats, we have a schola grasslands. We have a southwestern Ghats grasslands, we have eastern Ghats grasslands, we have mountain bamboo tracks of grasslands. So these are the variety of grassland found in India. Next please. So this is the actual picture of types of grassland which was measured in nineteen fifty-four to sixty-two. Showing actually where the types of, particular types of grasslands are situated. So temperate alpine cover which is at the Himalayan ranges, then the, there is a thimeda arundeneela type of grassland below that. Then there is a dicanthium sincretus lassurus cover type of grasslands. Then we have a fragmatis saccharum imperata type of grasslands. We have a fragmatis saccharum imperata dicanthium and sincretus type of grasslands. And in the central part of India, we have a sahima dicanthium cover type of grasslands. Next please. So here you can see the pictures of these grasslands, how it looks and how these are composed of variety of grasses. So this is a coastal grassland, salt marsh grassland, it is at the run of Kutch in Gujarat. Next please. This is a riverine aluvial grassland. Next please. This is a mountain grassland, alpine meadows. So this is one kind of a true grassland, which does not have a tree flora in them. And it forms a cover on the earth surface or on the ground. Next please. This is a trans-Himalayan grassland, again it is without the tree flora. Next please. This is a Tibetan steppes at Mansuror. Next please. This is a subhillai, uh sub-Himalayan tall grasslands of a terai region. So these terai grasslands, these are found at the foothills of the Himalayas. And they consist of a tall elephant grass along with the salt forests. And the largest herbivore of this terai is the elephant. So this, this is a very important herbivore which is depend on the grasses. And it requires an enormous amount of a tall grass to feed on. So it is found along the Ganga and the Brahmaputra rivers. Uh terai grasslands, they form the very important habitat for the swamp deer, even for the wild bupelos and the rhinoceros. Next please. This is a very important grassland which is found in the Nilgiri hills or in the south western Ghats or Sahayadres. Which is referred as a schola grassland. Uh this schola grassland, they are found in the high rainfall areas and that's why at the top of the mountain or the hill. We will see only grasses, there is no any tree flora due to the heavy rainfall, it does not support the growth of a trees. So this schola grasslands found in high rainfall areas in southern India and they are located on hill slopes. With a patches of forest that occur along the Nala courses. And the this nilgiri thar, this is the animal, this nilgiri thar is found only in this grassland. And nowadays it is highly endangered, so we have to conserve this grasslands for these animals too. Next please. This is again another kind of a grassland which is a semi-arid grassland, then this is a desert savanna type of grassland. Uh so these grasses, they actually provide a forage for the herbivores and. Uh because of that, they have developed the conjunction with the different types of a grasses. Uh these grazing animals, uh in turn they contribute to the grasslands by providing a nutrients. So like a symbiotic type of association, the, these animals that depend on the grasses for food. And later on, uh whatever the excrete and all these things, they come on the earth surface. At the same time, microorganisms and the biomass which is formed from the grasses. It supports the next kind of a succession in the ecosystem. So the, these grasslands are there. Now, as far as the Pune district is concerned, when I have studied the Sahayadri region. Especially the Mursi region which is a part of northern western Ghats. Um I have reported some special grasslands, like a simbopogon subtype of grassland. Thimeda, iselima subtype of grassland, then sedentestria subtype of grassland, heteropogon subtype of grassland. So these are the different names of the grasses and based on the abundance, based on the dominance, based on the frequency. Based on the density of these grasses, uh these are some of the subtitles which I have made. And you will see the pictures of all these grassland. Next please. So this is a simbopogon subtype of grassland, where there is a dominance of simbopogon grass. From which the essential oil is extracted and which cover the, this grass, it covers the whole surface. So there is a complete composition of a simbopogon type of grasses. Next please. This is a thimeda iselima type of grassland. So. So when there is a maximum precipitation in the soil and there is a good amount of nutrients in the soil, which is supporting a next level of a grasses. Also these include the thimida, these are a tall grasses, iselima it is also a tall grass. And this is because of the moisture content at a low lying areas. So at a conduri areas when we go to the Lavasa, on that way, this typical type of grasslands are found, next please. This is a heteropogon sedentistria type of grassland, again near to the Lavasa area. You will see the small hill slopes or the small mountains, these are covered with a only one kind of a grasses and this is a heteropogon type of a grass. And because of this, a large amount of biomass is formed, which support the insects, birds and reptiles and so many things. Get supported by such a kinds of grassland, next please. The another kind of grassland, again it is a heteropogon subtype, there is only heteropogon, there is no intermixed sedentistria species, next please. This is a dicanthium heteropogon sahima type of grassland. Where there is a composition of a three kinds of species from the grasses and that is why it is named as like this, next please. This is a sahima chrysopogon type of grassland at Lamkani, Dure. And I will tell you the story of this grassland afterwards, next please. Now many times what happened that we go on the plateau regions. We go on these areas and during summer season, we see that the complete area is barren. But actually students, it is not like that. It actually, it's a richest biodiversity area. World's richest biodiversity vegetation, one can say it is found on the plateaus. There may be a variety of species, not only the grasses but also the so many endemic. Endemic species or so many rare species. RIT species, rare endangered and threatened category species, they are found on the plateaus. But they are ephemeral one, they grows after a first rain shower. And once they complete their life cycle. They, they have a underground modified structures and that's why we cannot see the upper leaves or the flower structure and we say that this is a barren thing, nothing is there. But when we go there in the rainy season, it is completely flourished with so many grass species supporting the microflora which occurs or comes in during that season only. And that is why such a kinds of a grass flora, it is a very important for maintaining the ecosystem. So this is a dimeria type of grassland, which is an idiosyncratic grasses of a rock out crops of a higher altitude. So when we will go at the Salter or Barpe areas in Mulshi, you will see such a kinds of a plateau which is covered with a variety of plants, especially which are dominated by the grasses belonging to the dimeria category, next please. Not only this, the wall flora is on the forts, there are variety of grasses. And the most important endemic grass which occurs on the surface of the wall, it is a arthraczon jubatus. So it is present on the walls. So the main crest of the northern western Ghats or the Sahayadres, they supports a variety of grasses and they are mostly they are endemic one. Like arthraczon jubatus, trypogon, then pseudodicanthium, ischimum. So these are the names of a grasses which are generally found on the walls. And they plays very significant role in binding the soil. And these are coiclohydrus type of a grasses, they, they dry up during the rains, during the summer season. And regain, they becomes green during the rainy season, next please. So these are the variety of grasses which are endemic to the western Ghats, that is a loppo pogan tridentas. It is found on the rocky soil surface. Then apludamitica, it is the most palatable grass, it is most liked by the animals. It is a very good fodder grass, in Marathi it is called as a motigavat, next please. And the most important grass is a triplo pogan ramosisimum, it is occurring at a high altitudes as well as on the low lines also. And it is very important endemic grass from the Sahayadres, next please. Again, these are the variety of grasses, you just observe the morphology that is diversities in the inflorescence structure. It plays very significant role in the identification and they grow in a variety of soils. Like rocky soil, the soil which is less in nutrients or some in the marshy places, some at a high rainfall regions and so on, next please. Again see the diversity, like a aeragrost species, aeragrost pilla species, melanosynchro species and so on, next please. Then thilipogon grass, then andropogon grass. Penicetum pedicillatum, these are most palatable grasses to the animals, next please. And I have told you that not only the small herbaceous grasses are there, but there are tall tree like structures are also seen in the poesi family and it is nothing but the bamboo. So bamboos are the arboretum grasses and they belonging to the family again poesi which is a family bambusoidi. And actually they are differentiated from the other members of poesi, having a tree like habit. And they are having a hollow curls, curls means the stem structure and rhizome. And the branch system, there is a no shitting lip like structure like other grasses, next please. Now these bamboo species, they are a highly renewable resource for the human beings. Because every bamboo come, it reaches a full physical dimension in a one eighty to two hundred ten days and we can explore it, we can use that resource. The peak strength and maturity, it is in three to four years, so one can harvest and use for the various preparation of various products. And unlike other timber species, it can be harvested every year, so that is one of the advantage of a bamboo grass. And hundred and plus species of the bamboos are there all over the world. And hundred million tons of the growing stock may be available through the bamboos. It is one of the major industrial use and only pulp and paper industry, this source is utilized. And mostly it is cultivated in the Assam part of India, next please. So here you can see the various products of bamboo grass and it is an applications transforming an age-old material for us. It can be used for the building on traditional usage and based on the knowledge also. Or forging linkages between the organized and unorganized sectors, adding the values and creating a jobs to the young youth and also to create a income, to get the income and all parts of the bamboo plants are used for several other purposes. And so here you can see the various things, you know that the Hariprasat Chawra Sia and Naveen Kumar, that flute. So these comes through these bamboos only, next please. Now the ecological value. The grasses, they belonging to the two types of plants. Actually these are C-three plants and the C-four plants, it is very difficult to actually understand those are known non-bourtenise. But in short, I will tell you that the C-three photosynthesis, they produces a three-carbon compound via Kelvin cycle and C-four plants like maize, sugarcane, pearl millets and the sorghum. They produces by another pathway, carbon compound is produced through another pathway and they have a trans-type of anatomy, so here in this picture you are observing, at the center, there is a ring of a particular cells. This is nothing but a reed or a ring of a particular cells and that is known as a trans-anatomy. So C-three photosynthesis, that is the process through which the food material is synthesized in the plant material, which is known as a photosynthesis. So when the photosynthesis is through the C-three pathway, this is a three compound, a three-carbon compound via Kelvin cycle get produced. And it is seen in the plants like the sugarcane. While C-four photosynthesis, it marks an intermediate four-carbon compound that spreads into a three-carbon compound through Kelvin cycle. So these are two kinds of grasses, I want to say that these two kinds of grass plants are seen, C-three and C-four plants, I will not go in detail because it will take much more time. Then it shows a carbon sequestration. So soil carbon sequestration or the, is a process in which the carbon dioxide, it is removed from the atmosphere. And it is stored in the soil carbon pool. So this process is primarily mediated by the plants through the photosynthesis. So this kind, this mechanism, it is very good in the grasses. Then it has a sepage of water, so in a very slow motion or one can say that when water flows from one place to the another via smaller holes or the porous material, this process is very good in case of a grasses. And the grasses are having a very good root system, fibrous root system, advantageous root system. And there is a bunches of the grasses, so it prevent the very fast flow of the water. So there is a reduction in the runoff of water during the rainy season. So it prevents the soil erosion in that way. And the moisture retention capacity in fibrous root, it is very high. And that is why it is good for the health of the soil. To keep the soil live, to keep the soil active, because there are, soil is not a dead thing. There are lot of things in the soil and so this soil get enriched by the moisture present in the soil. And this proper, very important function is carried out by our grasses. So grasses plays very significant role in the ecosystem, to maintain the good health. As far as the ecology is concerned, it provides a food not only to the mankind but to the variety of organisms on the earth surface. It is a very good fodder value, it is also used for the fuel purpose, for clothing purpose and fetching purpose etc. It plays significant role in the primary colonization and succession, so generally when we see the vegetation in the primary stage, we see the smaller plant group, like there may be algae or there may be bryophytes and later on once the biomass get formed, then the nature-like plants get formed like teridophytes. And then gymnospermse and the climax or the, of the any kind of vegetation is the forest or the tree flora. So the basic thing, it starts from the grasses because they forms the biomass. And once there is a formation of biomass, nutrient level get enhanced, it gets increased. And then it supports the further kind of a flora. So grasses plays very, very, very significant role in the primary colonization and successional stages to produce the climax forest type of thing. One more very important thing is that it is a habitat for other wildlife. By taking one example of the animal, man-animal conflict in the nature. One can understand the significance of the grasses, because if there will be no herbivores in the grass, in the forest, the wildlife will not sustain. And nowadays the forests get cut, the grasslands are not maintained properly or on the grassland areas, the tree flora, trees are grown. So in this way, there is a reduction or there is a destruction in the grasslands. And because of that, the herbivores are not available to the carnivorous animal. And this is the biggest problem in the ecosystem and that's why we see bipta-like animals in the agricultural fields, next please. So the grasses, these are very economically important species, most of the grasses like triticum estivum. So near about ten to twelve staple food of the mankind, it comes out of these grasses. Like wheat, triticum estivum, corn, barley, rice, rye, oat, sorghum, pearl millets, finger millets. And the variety of these wheat species, so wheat it is actually come from the grasses like triticals. Then it is a, actual species, it is a triticum estivum which we eat or it is a triticum durum. Or triticum turgidum or monococum like that or polonicum. But the earlier grasses, these are crossed and from that by breeding process, these our most important grasses are developed, like cereals and millets, they come out of the breeding programs. So these are the wild relatives of our cereals, next please. So these are the variety of cultivated grasses, you know all these things, next please. So here you can see the panoramic view of the rice cultivation at Marwale region. How it looks, so maximum area, agriculture area, it is under the cultivation of variety of grasses, next. Then there are fodder grasses. Like napier grass, penicetum perpirium or the guinea grass, panicum, panicum maximum. But beside that, there are more than three hundred species of grasses are there and as far as Mulshi region is concerned. I have reported one hundred and eighty-four species of grasses and all these are very good fodder for the animals. Then so many essential oils are extracted from the grasses, which is either used in a perfumery or in the cosmetic industries. Like lemon grass, then a palm Rosa, then whatever, that is wala grass. Which is used for purifying the water bodies. Then grasses, these are a good habitat for our wildlife. It is a livelihood options for us, these are very good soil binders, next please. There are variety of ornamental grasses are there. There is one person who said one statement like, there is nothing more pleasant to the eye than the green grass. So here you can understand how it looks beautiful and it becomes so pleasant. There are variety of grasslands are cultivated for landscaping purposes like rinkilitram grass, then zoysia grass. Then cyanodon, there are variety of grasses are used for landscaping purposes. Then there is also medicinal properties to the grasses, like there is a cyanodon dactylon grass which is having a cooling properties. And it is used for variety of problems. The broom, the haduapanmanto, that is also prepared from one of the grass species that is thizolina. So the first picture it is of thizolina, the background picture it is of imperata cylindrica. The corner picture it is of zoysia, the lower picture it is of a fragmites grass and the corner picture it is of a another species that is ulaliopsis bineta, which is a grass from which the rope or rope is prepared. So it is having a highest percentage of a fiber in them. And it also plays the important role in a carbon sequestration, in that sepoor grasses are very important, next please. Then just now I have told you that grasses are very good for the food purpose, twelve different staple food come from this grasses and fodder. You know that the, India ranks second in the milk production after the Denmark. And this animal, animal husbandry, all these things, they depend on the monocot members and especially the grasses. So most of the grasses, they are cultivated for the fodder purposes. So these are the fodder grasses and the highest milk production in the world and here the India is ranking second. It is because of the richest biodiversity of the grasses and here you can understand that how the grasses are very important. Because at every morning, we want to drink the milk. So from where exactly milk comes, so we say that this comes from the animals. Bupelo gives and cow gives the milk, but it is not like that, our grass is playing very significant role, they are growing there, the animals feed on that. And the fodder value, highest fodder value, it is through the grasses. Grasses and cover, it is very important, it prevent the soil erosion. And they, they increase the highest nutrients in the soil, they enrich the soil, they make, they keep the soil live. Otherwise the soil become dead and nothing will grow over there. So these are the small things, many times it get, it is not noticed over there, but they are continuously working over there. And the soil microflora, it is playing significant role in the degradation of these grasses. So they are symbiotically growing over there. There is one statement by the taxonomist or the scientist, they said that if one can uproot or one can destroy one of the species from the nature, at that time twenty-five dependent organism get lost. So this grass cover, it plays a very important role in conservation of these organism. So try to conserve all the grasses. There is one species of the grass which is recently discovered by the, one of the group from Colapur, that is hubardhe haptenuron. So for the conservation of that single species, the ministry has given a like fifty to sixty lakh rupees. So if, here you can understand what is the value of a single grass species. There is a gene diversity and every gene, like human being, we have a specific gene composition. We have a genetic diversity within us, a similar kind of genes are there in the plants. So every gene present in the plants So every gene present in the plants, this is very important. And so here, all the grass species, they play a very significant role for us, but we don't know. So try to respect our grasses. And they play a very important role in the soil conservation, they play a role in the restoration program. They play a role in the conservation of wildlife, they play a very important role in the phytoremediation. They reduce the chemical compounds, they absorb it like chromium, mercury, all these things. So at the industrial level, they are very important. Grasses maintain the climate, they provide us the sugar, they are using medicines. Next please. Then you know that we are using it grasses for religious purposes, like a cyanidone dactylone. The rope which is prepared from one of the grass species that is penicetum, it is used in the dasra season to put the leaves of mango on that rope and it will be tied in front of the door. So these are the religious grasses, they have some significant values with us. Next please. Grasses plays very important role for aromatic oils. So variety of aromatic oils or essential oils are extracted from the grasses. For conservation, for biomass production, it is for shelter purpose, for fetching purpose. Huts are prepared in the Sayadri region, many people, they use a variety of grasses like pseudanthus, reanthemeda grasses for fetching purposes. Paper industries depend on the bamboo grass, alcohol is extracted from the sugar cane. And then the variety of microbes are there in the soil for biomass production. There are ornamental plants which are cultivated for lawn preparation, for landscaping purposes and grasses and civilization. Next please. So these are the different grass species which are cultivated for landscaping purpose. Next. Now why the management of a grassland is essential? Actually the grasslands and deserts are among the most neglected and yet very important ecosystems. Where the different species, population, communities, they come together and forming a very complex ecosystem. Which is supporting a very rich biodiversity in the Maharashtra and India. And as far as the India and Maharashtra is concerned, only one percent of grassland risk comes under a protected area net network. So we have to more concentrate on the management of grassland, we have to increase the grassland instead of cultivation of a trees. We have to go for cultivation and management of a grassland, don't go for the growing the trees on the hills. Instead you have to go for protection of a grasslands. So the most neglected and abused ecosystem is the grasslands in the country. And it is a very serious issue as far as the wildlife is concerned. And in that case, the Madhya Pradesh Foreign Department, they are taking a care for cultivation and management of the grasslands. So that is a very good example. Some of the most threatened and rare species of wildlife make the grassland their homes. And they include the Indian bastard, lesser florican, one-horned rhinoceros, wild bupelo, swammy deer and so on. This semirid decken patches, they are converted to the agricultural landscape, industrial construction it is there, overgrazing it is there. Because of the fire also there is a problem in the destruction of a wildlife and for the food purpose too. The wildlife like a black box, chinkaraz, wolves and the Indian fox, jackals, they have been affected by major due to the destruction of a grassland, even the majority of birds like larks and the gray partridge. All these things are affected due to the disappearance of the grasslands. Next. So the variety of insects, bees, beetles, reptiles, pollinator crops are found on the abundance in the grasslands. To maintain the food chain ecosystem, it is very important, it plays prime role. Increasing the irrigation facility and population, it forced to convert these grasslands into the agricultural land, but it should be avoided. Tourism should be in a proper manner, poaching and encroachment by farmland people, they also affected the biodiversity of the, especially the grasslands. Cultivation of trees in the grasslands, they affect the grass health and biomass production. Grassland areas are considered as a wasteland and so it was burnt during the month of December or January, which losses the biodiversity. So it should be prevented, there should not be burning happen there. It plays very significant role in the soil conservation and it maintains the ecosystem health. Next please. So there are some example that what happened with these grasses and how our animals and the birds, they get endangered. So the grassland development at Winsurni Fulton area from Sathara district was once known as the grass bowl of Maharashtra. But due to the uncontrolled grazing by the animals and the trampling by livestock, there is deterioration in the grasslands. Even the Mayuresha village sanctuary and the Baramati in the Suppe village. It is special for gazelle, banity and this depends on the grasslands. The Karnala bird sanctuary in Mumbai, grassland patches with many birds and butterflies, animals like a four-horned antelope, Indian hare, Indian fox, wild boar, jungle cat and common langur, leopard and common mongooses and they occur in the sanctuary. The grasslands at Lamkani, it is one of the very good example where by the efforts of Sanjay, Dr. Sanjay sir or there, he took efforts and because of that, they have, they are, they have succeeded in increase in the groundwater level. And nowadays, instead of a desertified conditions of the village, they have improved the economy just because of the maintenance of the grasslands. And the water level, it is increased and now people, they were taking a cash crops like these custard apples and then banana and all other agricultural crops. It's just because, this is a very good example of maintenance of a grassland at Lamkani and Lurin Forest at Dury. Next please. So this is one of the animal like a black buck sanctuary, in the black buck sanctuary at Karzat, Antelope Servikira. Which depends on hardly at two hundred and forty hectares of area. Actually, this area is not sufficient for the survival of these species and so one should maintain the grasslands. Next please. Great Indian bastard sanctuary, bird sanctuary at Malduk and you know that how the species get endangered in the nanas and there is much more encroachment and the foreign department and the government is not taking care for the, this maintenance of grassland. And many other activities are going over there and this bird it becomes endangered nowadays. Next please. This is one of the picture from Mollshi area where they have destroyed the trees and the grasslands, they get exposed. And this is for the purpose of agriculture and one should conserve all these things and one should must have watch on these grasslands for protection. Next please. So preservation of all these grasslands, it is very significant, very important. So how to save this grassland? So grassland should not be burnt, it should not be considered as a wasteland. Initiatives from the foreign department to conserve this grassland, it is highly essential. Prevention or prohibition of the industrial areas near the sensitive zones should be considered. The state and national policies should not remain on the paper and it should come in action. And so there should be, there is a need to take effort from the societal level at so every, everyone should be aware about the significance of the grasslands and they should take a proper action over this. Then grazing of livestock should be prevented in protected grassland areas. Instead allow local people to cut the grasses or allow controlled grazing. Like Sarai Bandi type of principle should be followed. There should be proper protection to grassland to maintain the ecosystem. It should be mandatory to maintain at least some land as a grassland. So earlier there was a lands in every village for these pastures. So that should be maintained properly, nowadays this is on the paper only and not in action. So it should be come in force and it should be mandatory to maintain at least some land as a grassland with the involvement of the local people at the local level. Educate the society about the grassland as a gold land rather than a wasteland. And by workshop or campaign, one should educate the people, the young youth about the grassland protection. How it, these are important for us. Next please. Thank you so much for listening to me. I took it a little bit fast because of maximum slides, but hope you understood the value and significance of the grasslands.
Yeah, thank you ma'am. Yes, it was a long PPT presentation, but it was not absolutely boring or you know, we enjoyed it a lot and I guess let's open the platform for question answers so we'll understand even more. So you can ask questions or there are few questions already asked, we can take one by one. So Tanvi, can you take it ahead?
Yes ma'am. So the first question is from Mr. Nishant Venugopal. His question is, if I need to understand the grass, which part of the grass I need to photograph? And is there any citizen science effort to catalog the variety of grass?
Okay, so much work is now done on, in Maharashtra. Before that, the grass identification, it is generally based on the spikelet structure or the floret structure. So you have to take a picture of a flower, it is known as a floret. So spikelet structure, that is spikelets are having many florets or few florets. And the morphology of floret, that is lower gloom, I have showed one picture of a floret, dissected floret. So lower floret, it gives us idea, so just by understanding the ornamentation pattern of a lower gloom, one can identify near about sixty species of grasses. So just take a good pictures of a lower gloom and also the inflorescence pattern. So that helps us for identification purpose. And for that, there are some books like, there is one book by Girish Podar, Grasses of Maharashtra. And one book by Dr. Yasari Ado and his team, that is Identify the Grasses Through Lanes. So they, they have a pictorial book through which you can identify the grasses. Hope it will help and if you need any, anything more, you just contact me later on.
Thank you ma'am for answering the questions and the platform. Hello ma'am.
Yes.
Can you send this PPT?
Yes, it is already shared, you can take from the ma'am.
Okay ma'am. So are there any question in the chat box, Tanvi?
Oh no, not anymore.
So, so people who are here, you can open your mics, videos and you can ask questions directly, you can raise your hands or even you can ask directly.
Yes, we have two people. Let's start with Divyandhu Sarkar.
Good morning ma'am, this is Divyandhu Sarkar. I would like to ask one thing as you said truly that don't call it wasteland, call it grassland. So that is a very new thing which I learned and from today onwards, I will just adopt this. Let's change my mentality.
Okay, it's a gold land actually, it's a gold land.
Yes, but ma'am, what I personally feel is nothing that comes with profits can be saved easily. So these grasslands and the endangered species are encroached and killed due to other profits. If, is there any way so that we can make these grasslands profitable? Like planting some trees, any kind of species or any, any other mode that can help this, we can save more. Because sometimes the mentality has changed from grassland to wasteland. So how can we do that?
Actually the, we have to educate the people and especially one has to contact the foreign department because foreign department only taking cultivation programs. So the thing is that they have to take much effort for grassland management. This is the first thing, second thing, those people or those farmers, they have a land, agricultural land. But they are treating it as a wasteland, suppose. So on that land, one can grow the grasses and that can be harvested and sold as a fodder.
Yes, exactly.
So that, just this one example can clear the value of grasses.
Yes, exactly. I, I was trying to know whether we can use means grasses like bamboo and lemon grass. They, they are used for, means sold at higher cost. Yes, yes. And you said like aroma oils can be made, they are very high value products. So if we can use many grasses, cross cultivation like of thing, that can help, I think.
There are so many people from Raipur area, Madhya Pradesh, they are, they are cultivating the simbopogon grasses. For extraction of essential oil and they were, they sold them to the different industries or especially cosmetic industries.
Okay, thank you ma'am, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ma'am, one more thing, how can I help, help your cause? We all can help your cause, saving these grasslands.
Very important thing, those people who are taking a cultivation program, treating the hills as a wasteland. Tell them that these are the grasses, these are there and you know that, the very important bird, peacock. During the summer season, this peacock eat the grains of these grasses. And suppose if they will cultivate the trees and it will become a forest, at that time the grasses will not grow in abundance. So tell them that instead of growing the trees, try to manage the grasses. Cultivate the grasses. Grasses can be cultivated during summer season, you have to sow the seeds. So what happens during the rainy season, it will germinate. And once the biomass get formed, they, you know, next year it will germinate. There is one grassland development program which was run by or carried out by Ketki Hathi and Mansi Karandikar. And they have given very good example that how the grasslands can be managed and developed.
Is there any kind of templates or any educational materials that you can share with us? And we all can share on our social media platform so that that can spread very rapidly and educate more and more people. Even those who are not on this platform.
Yes, definitely, I will share.
Yes, yes, I think that will help a little bit to your cause. Thank you ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Next we have Shubhi Agarwal.
Hello, good afternoon ma'am. As we were talking, as you were talking about carbon sequestration, so I just want to know that the grassy patches of our campus, how could it be used for carbon sequestration versus?
You can grow some sepoor grasses. So you have to find out on the internet which are the different sepoor grasses or you may contact me later on.
Only the sepoor grasses will work ma'am.
That will work more. Kithri grasses also do, but sepoor grasses will work more. So I will suggest the names of the species, they may be grow there in your campus. So one thing is that you have to know this, you have to identify this and then try multiplication of all these grasses, it will help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kanishk.
Kanishk, are you there? Otherwise Mayuri, you can go ahead.
Yes ma'am, I am there actually, I had a bad connection, so I could not hear. Am I audible now?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, good afternoon ma'am. Ma'am, my question was regarding, there are these grasslands which are present in Gujarat Skach region and they are the species which is called, it is known as bawar. And many people say that they are sucking excess water and they are very invasive and they are very destructive. So should those grasslands be considered as wrong or what, what is your opinion on those kinds of grasslands? Where people are thinking as they are taking away the local fauna and everything, what is your opinion on that?
Actually that grassland is very important. Because they are found along the seashore. And they uptake the soil, sorry, soil particles. So these are, and also besides that, so many birds are visiting to that area. So it's a food for these birds, actually it's not a invasive type of grass, but it's actually useful. Local people, they feel that this is invasive one, it is not like that.
Okay ma'am, there was actually.
I have not visited that area actually, I have not seen that, yeah.
Okay, actually I had visited, so there was.
But any grassland. But any grassland.
Uh, am I audible?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, ma'am, I had visited that area and many people were telling ki during Indira Gandhi's rule for creating a fast green development in Kutch region to make it green in very less amount of time. Through aeroplanes and helicopters, they threw these seeds of bawad and then they have grown and now they are taking away the invasive forest, like the forests which were originally growing there. So they are like complaining about these forests.
Actually, I am not aware about that particular species. I will go through it and then I will see what is exactly that grass species and what's happening over there.
Okay ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayuri, you can go ahead with the question.
Yes, hello ma'am, I want to ask. Hello, am I audible?
Yeah, yeah, you are audible.
Yes, ma'am, now, before some time, you have mentioned that we need to do the cultivation of grasses on the hills. But my question is when I used to visited the Tarzai Tikri near my place, again, many times I observed, there is a seasonal change, like in rainy season, there are a lot of huge grasses are there, but afterwards during the winters, winter time, I can observe that the grasses, the the variety of grasses vanished, I don't know how it, how it happened naturally or it means the grasses are seasonals or they are.
Actually, the grasses are seasonal.
Okay.
During rainy season, they grow and once they complete their life cycle in three to four months, they get vanished. So they get transformed into the biomass. So they dry up, biomass is formed from that. So lifespan is short, its lifespan is hardly three to four months. Only few grasses, they are having a perennial type of thing. Means long-lived grasses are there, like tripogon and hygrotiza, these are a long-lived grasses. But Aristida and other kinds of species, they are short-lived. Lopogon, yeah.
Okay ma'am, then link to this, I want to ask one more question. So as a designer, when we, when we want to introduce the grasses in the public spaces, maybe a garden or maybe a hillside, so we need to maintain it, so we need to re-cultivate it after some period of time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more question from Mr. Satvashil Jagda. This question is, does forest department have any policy or regulations to cultivate or save the grassland? Especially in class, cast like areas?
Uh, actually, I don't have clear idea, but on cast plateau, there is a very rich diversity. So such a things cannot be done as only grass showing is carried out over there. It is not like that, but those areas which are open, there means outside areas. There the foreign department can go for cultivation or management, but on the class, cast plateau, it is not possible. And the forest department will also not do such a things.
Thank you, thank you ma'am. We have another question from Mr. Nishant. Uh, his question is, there are reports of some practice by indigenous communities of burning grasses to promote fresh growth, any idea about this? Does this help the grasses and biodiversity?
Actually, it is a wrong thing happening, the people feel that if one can burn the grasses, it will grow properly, but actually they are, means burning these grasses for one purpose. Because agriculture lands are situated to the forest lands. And if they will burn that land, the seeds will not come in the agricultural field and there will be no further problem of a weeding. But if one can burn the grasses or the grasslands, definitely most of the flora and fauna, it gets harmed. Especially the microflora. Since microbiota is there, so many fungal species, so many bacterias are there, they are performing in the soil, it is not seen through the eyes. They are so microscopic. So all these becomes dead because of that. So most of the important microflora get vanished by burning these grasslands. It should not be burnt.
Uh, thank you ma'am. Uh, we have another question from Lalitha Tilming. Ma'am, you can go ahead.
Uh, good morning everyone and thank you ma'am for the very good presentation. I am personally being very benefited on this and I have one question and that is with the bamboo identification. Uh, can you help me in some characteristics which we should look for in bamboo identification? Or how can I identify bamboo species particularly from Pune itself?
Uh, in case of bamboos, instead of a inflorescence or instead of a same structure, the scales which are present at the nodal region, so the scale morphology or the, what do we say? Hmm. Uh. There is a one structure, lipi structure, a papary structure or sometimes membranous structure which is present at the nodal region of bamboos. So that actually used for identification, there is, there are books for bamboo species identification. Later on, you can contact me, I will tell you the name of that book through which you can identify the bamboo species.
Thank you, thank you ma'am.
Yeah.
Uh, ma'am, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, so I have an inclined interest towards orchids. I'd like to understand whether species of orchids like maybe habanaria or let's say terrestrial ones or which are generally found in midst of grasses. So these species, do they get affected by the type or the species of grasses around them? And how do the grasses play an important role around these?
Uh, not much for the epiphytic orchids, but as far as the terrestrial orchids is concerned or the seprophytic orchids is concerned, especially terrestrial means habanaria, longicorniculata or the habanaria, other species, so, so many species are there, so many. So that get definitely affected by the grasses. Because if the grass flora is not associated with this species, it will not grow. There is an interaction between the microflora, which is associated with the rhizosphere of the grasses and the rhizosphere of the, this orchid.
Okay.
So if the grasses will get destroyed, the orchid species definitely get affected, their ratio will get reduced. Their percentage or the population get reduced. So maintenance of the grass flora for protection of so many rare species, so many orchid species, variety of species, it is very important.
Right, okay, thank you ma'am.
So, I guess, you know, many of these questions, they were in my mind also. So it was a really good question answer session. If there are any question, yes, there, I can see one hand. Uh, but before that, just let me ask one question which I have just talked to my head. So Rani ma'am, nowadays, different campuses coming along or societies and they keep on maintaining lawns. So can you guide us about, because nowadays, they say that by maintaining a lawn, you are wasting a lot of water also. Instead, you can use some other thing instead of lawns. So if people are maintaining lawns, is there any specific grass species which we can use in that? Or we should not have lawn in landscape in majority of cases, what you should think?
Actually, if you have a very small space, oh, you can go ahead with a lawn, no problem. Because in a small space, you want to make a greenery. But you have, if you have a large space, a landscape over there, at that time, you can distribute it. A small patch, it will be for the lawn and other, on other area, you may go for cultivation of one of the species from centella. Mundukparinitis, it forms a carpet. So you have to go for a carpet farming another species, not only the grasses, but another dicotyledonous plants. Carpet farming species are also there. So you have to go for cultivation of that. And it's true that there is a wastage of water for the lawns, it's true. So instead of that, you may go for another species, but if small space it is there, you may go for lawn also.
Okay, thanks.
We have one question from Poojita.
Hello ma'am.
Yes.
Yes ma'am, I've been exploring about foraging edible weeds around us and um, as we've talked about farmers burning the grass, is, is that to be helpful if we provide the knowledge for them to like learning about foraging edible weeds? Because even it is not only useful for fodder, even humans can eat for nutritional purposes. So how could we do that?
Actually, Poojita, what the people are doing or the farmers are doing, they are firstly cutting that grasses for fodder purpose. And after that, they are burning. So as far as the importance is concerned, they know that the value for fodder purpose. So more than that, we have to tell them that don't burn it.
Yes, okay. And what about the, for human consumption now? There are many who have started foraging the edible weeds around the public places. Is there any, is that useful for the biodiversity?
As far as the indigenous flora is concerned, it's not harmful or hazardous. But if it's an exotic thing, then one has to look for that.
Okay ma'am, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. We are open for one last question now. Uh, okay, I think everybody has asked questions. Um, I request everybody to turn on their videos so we can have a quick picture. And.
And let's thank Rani ma'am with the open videos. Thanks everyone. Yes, thank you.
So much.
Uh, so I'd like to thank Rani ma'am on behalf of Simba's Biodiversity Cell and all the participants present here. And we'd like to thank you ma'am for taking out the time to impart and empower us with knowledge. I'm sure all of us present here have learnt a new thing about grasses especially. And especially things like, I mean, when you think of grasses, one generally doesn't think about the granularity of these delicate species. And it's amusing to know the wonders of grasses and how important of an habitat it is for various species around us. Aspects like difference in type of grasses which depends on the habitat. And looking at it as a collective species, we still fail to understand its diversity and importance. And now I'm sure we all will certainly be looking at grasses with a newfound interest and do our part to understand and hence do our part to save grasslands. So thanks a lot ma'am for today and thank you all for taking time out on a Sunday. Hope you all have a good day ahead and take care, stay safe and have a great day ahead.
Thanks Tanvi.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
So Rani ma'am, I'll also end with this note that we invite you on our campus. After this session, like almost every alternate slide, I was thinking that I should get you on the campus, walk with you and show you around different grasses and ask you many questions. Because this session is utterly incomplete without walking with you on the, in the field. So I invite you and some of our students definitely will join. So thanks and hope to see you on the campus ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Actually, it's a topic to learn on the ground and not online.
But still, it was a fantastic presentation and we like.
Hope everybody understood it.
No, no, we really means understand many of the things. Uh, some botanical things which definitely, when we will go on the field, then we'll understand even better. But we really had a better understanding of grass species and its significance. Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
So okay, see you next Sunday on another fantastic session. So next Sunday, speaker is also with us today. I'm not going to divulge his name. But yes, see you next Sunday for another session. Thanks, thank you everyone. Bye.
Thank you, bye.
Bye ma'am.
Thank you.
So my team, Tanvi and Kunalal Tejal, thanks, thank you very much. I'm going to talk with you, we haven't yet finished. So let's see you on our group now.
Yes, thank you, thank you ma'am, thank you everyone.
Yeah, bye.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you ma'am, thanks a lot.